You're good to go.
Okay, very good. I'd like to call to order the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners meeting for September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Would you please stand while Ms. Will Anne Daniels give a prayer and then we'll do the plan.
That's great. Lord, we thank you for this evening. Thank you for these commissioners that are willing to serve our community. And thank you for everyone that took their time to attend tonight. Pray that you just give us wisdom and understanding as we go through this meeting in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sheriff, I'm glad you could make it. Okay. Ms. Will Anne.
Yes, sir. We have several additions tonight. Under section two, we have number fifteen, which will be board approval to set a public hearing for readoption of the six cent gas tax. Number sixteen, which is request board review and approval of mowing program position. Number seventeen, request board approval to award contract twenty twenty-one dash ten. Number eighteen, board approval to award C E I services for Sweet Palm Road. Number nineteen, board approval to award C E I services for District Two roads. Number twenty, request board approval to award County Road two eighty-six, Blueberry Drive. And lastly, I have one deletion under section two, number ten, which is the litter and trimming item.
Chairman, I'll offer a motion to the agenda with the additions and deletions be approved.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Donna Proach to approve the agendas. There are second, second by Commissioner Hill. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Okay. Everyone has had a chance to review the agenda and the consent agenda items.
Chairman, make a motion to accept the consent agenda items as presented.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Fay, second by Commissioner Hill. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Okay. Request. Ms. Sarah Sun. Sheriff, you're on the hot spot.
You don't lie, sir.
No, we prefer Sarah.
We'd received a reimbursement from FEMA from back in twenty eighteen. An amount, like thirty-three thousand even. And originally, we were going to ask to get that back. And through talking with Mr. Potts about the painting of the sheriff's office out on Highway ninety, and it was not in the original contract to have it painted. And we've spoken with the contractor who is doing the work, VGN, and they're going to give us a price. And I think that amount will cover having the office painted, the interior part. So we're not going to ask to have that back. We're going to give it to you guys and, and ask you guys to put that towards having the interior painted.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Hill. Second by Commissioner McKinney. Any questions?
It's just the interior?
Yes, sir.
So, but there is a painting contractor's?
There was, there was no, one was put out to bid.
No painting whatsoever.
Hunter had left it, yeah, it wasn't in there. And we were going to possibly paint it ourselves, but that's a lot of painting. And so the guys that were there, so it would just require a change order.
Okay.
The, the, we're already approved a change order to replace the metal fascia panels. What about, there's a lot of, I guess it's all brick, but there's still a lot of exposed concrete block on the outside of that building too, is there not, on the backside?
Yes, there's some block and brick, and I mean, we may paint it later.
Okay.
Some of them out there working today?
They're out there everything, yes.
Yeah, well, I just.
Right now, they're waiting on the metal to go on the sides that you guys approved last week. And they can't move forward with the top until that happens. And the guys on the inside now are like taking no boring gun. They don't want to put any, place any sheet rock until the roof's secure.
Okay, any more questions? All, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Sandy Martin. Don't come up here and tell me we got more COVID cases.
I'm not.
I haven't seen you in a long time.
I know, that's a good thing, right?
That is true.
I did bring you some, some of the weekly COVID reports that came out last Friday just for you to have. And I'll be glad to entertain any questions, but that's not the reason I'm here today. The first thing, the first agenda item that we have before you today is the WIC infrastructure grant.
Thank you. This is second, but actually in our book.
We're doing the west first, which is fine. Difficult for someone to read.
Exactly.
Yeah, without glasses.
Okay, the WIC infrastructure grant is something that was given to us with a very short turnaround time for us to come up with what to do with it. And the reason we're asking for board approvals because it requires an alteration of the building that we occupy, which is a county building. The two pictures you have in front of you, the first one, this is just in the WIC area back in the back. This is, shows our front window. And this is a speaker that does not work, has never really functioned well. And so people end up with their mouth down at the hole where the documents go to speak. And so we want to have that replaced. And then the second picture is once you enter the WIC area, the entire area is very open. Sound carries, so there's a lack of privacy. Sometimes people will put a little child up on the counter as we're digging through their purse, since we want to avoid that. And certainly to decrease, you know, the spread of communicable diseases. So the second picture shows you what we want there, which is three glass panels with a separating area underneath to slide papers back and forth for the WIC person that's on the other side of that window. And again, we're, we have the money granted to us. We're not asking for any funds. We're just asking for permission to alter the building using.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill. Second by Commissioner Fay. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. The core contract is a template that we use that's given to us by the state. It's the exact same template every year. There's been no change to the core contract as it stands, no change to the monetary agreement. The two fee schedules are there presented for you as well, the environmental health fee schedule and the clinic fee schedule. The environmental health fee schedule was increased slightly for lab fees. And that's only because the lab fees that we are charged were increased to us. So we did increase the lab fees. The clinic fees, we did identify three areas where we decreased fees, actually. That's three immunizations, and those were decreased. Otherwise, nothing has changed about the contract. This is for October one to nine thirty.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Fay, second by Commissioner Hill. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Ms. Sandy.
Any other questions?
No, we're good. Thank you.
Thanks so much, have a good night.
Okay.
No, we didn't.
You have questions for her?
That's good. We're just getting the right paperwork.
Okay, Ms. Kristi Andresson. Kristi Andresson.
Good evening, board. I'm on Zoom. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah, we got you. Go ahead.
All right, before my request, I just wanted to extend the invitation to the county commissioners and administration to join our Explore Northwest Florida meeting next Thursday. That's September twenty-third. It will start at ten a.m. It's going to be at the newly renovated Bascom School Museum. The museum itself is not completely finished, but the committee that's been working on that has graciously decided to open their doors to us for us to host our meeting there. And it'll be a great opportunity for y'all to come in and get a kind of first look at what that is going to be like for them. And then also see what we do as a regional tourism group. But this request that I have tonight is actually a contract with Visa View for Visit Florida. This is the data that we collect. We had, I think, signed an agreement on this earlier in the year. And then Visa View changed the way they collected and distributed the data to us. So we are just updating it. We have not expended any money on this yet. So this will be for, for the twenty twenty-one data. And then we will do this again in a couple of months for the twenty twenty-two data.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill. Second, second by Commissioner Donna Proach. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Kristi.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. David Melvin.
Which one I got first? The?
We got the.
Number four, change order six.
Final completion project nineteen twenty thirty.
It's what happened on that. We came and the crushed rock material, the contractor, we thought we had the final quantities on that. And instead, he left off the July billing for that, for the tonnage required for that. So we had to add the tonnage. The bad news is eleven dollars a ton. It's paid out to grant funds. The good news is you've got quite a bit more material there. In fact, I think it's up to two point eight miles of road.
Didn't we do this?
We did. We, we, we closed it out.
They came in with the changes.
So we came back and there's more material. We went out, we went out and measured the mirror, the piles and the density test and the materials there. And it verifies with the tonnage run that they have on the machine.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Donna Proach. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Next one is yours too, Mr. David Phoenix.
Yeah, what this is, is we were fortunate enough to ask Career Source, Chipola, to fund the fifty thousand dollar curriculum for the autism school. You have a contract with First Place of Arizona to develop the program that included fifty thousand dollars of curriculum that the job growth grant is going to pay for. We kind of thought, I kind of thought, well, I'll twist Richard Williams' arm a little bit and see if Career Source can pay that. And they did, and they paid that. And so we're able to free up fifty thousand dollars in the First Place contract under the job growth grant. And there's some additional services that are, that we want to utilize as far as the website development and those type of things in it. So we're going to use those additional fifty thousand dollars in the job growth grant to do that. Some correction from the, the change order that's in your packet is we modified that because we don't need to delete the fifty thousand dollar. So we leave the fifty thousand in there. It's just, it'll be paid by Career Source in there and doing it. So we'll track those two sources of funding different. But thank you to Career Source for adding fifty thousand dollars to our autism program.
We definitely appreciate that. Got a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Fay. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
What's the update on Endeavor? Where are we at? All the stocks are done, all the concrete?
Yeah, so, so where we're at on the, yeah, on the overall, the, the demolition, we've closed out again for the second time. We closed it out, so it's, it's complete. The renovation to the autism school, we're making a few tweaks to the, to the floor plans and all on that. But we have, you've awarded the contract. We got the contract with M and W Construction to start that. The gym to, to be converted to civic center or shelter, those grant applications go in this variety on that. So the county you're turning in to, they're both in the seven or eight million dollar range. One for the gym conversion to shelter, the other ones for doing some of the additional infrastructure primary, primarily the electrical and all like that. And so jumping around a little bit, so in our job growth grant, we have about two million dollars left. And we're designing the final part of that, which will pave the two roads, the Rick Scott Drive and Endeavor. Part Boulevard and the lighting and all like that, to utilize that money. Also going on, and it is our new market tax credit that's going in. And it looks like we'll net about six or seven hundred thousand dollars on it and hope to close on, on that.
For the autism center.
For the autism center in that. And so we'll hopefully pick up another seven hundred thousand dollars from it.
What about the Passover? I know it had been mentioned a while, the, the DJJ, DJJ store in Charlotte, who's in that D M T?
Yeah, so we left that subject about a year and a half ago. On it, and DOT was checking on it. I think our stance as the county is we don't own it and, and let DOT and DJJ decide who owns it. And we were in some final discussions with DOT. I think they recognize that, that they own it. And at some point, they'll probably remove it. But I hadn't followed, last year I hadn't followed back up with them on that.
It was safe. There was a few issues that, but it was safe to use, right? The American disability.
Issue from a county perspective is in some ways you say it's a nice way to cross the street there. And the others, you say, well, if you touch it, you're going to own it and maintain it. And you have the issues with somebody getting up there and dropping rocks on vehicles and, and all like that. So I mean, it's your decision. I think if you want it, the state will be glad to switch the permit over to you and, and you can own it. Or we take the stance and tell the state, it's not ours. It was DJJ's and it, and it's yours.
We ever had to move it, that's, that's we always let DOT keep.
So let's wait and see how it develops on both sides of the road. It may be an asset at one point in the future, but.
At that point in time, we can petition them to let us out.
Just let it sit as is.
Structurally, it's, it's sounding, and they've got a report on it and, and all like that. You know, I always say on those kind of crossings, if you have a fence to herd people to go through it, people aren't going to walk up the stairs. A lot of times, they're going to take their chances walking across the, the street on it. But, but it's there, so. State'd be glad to let us take it back.
We're not raising our hand yet.
Otherwise, you know, if we want it removed sooner, then we may want to push the state to add that to, to remove it. So it's just kind of laying there.
Thank you, David.
Okay.
Chief Broner.
I'm going to take this item for the chief. Is a request for board approval of a mutual aid agreement between the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners and MTC Grayskyle Correctional Facility. This is just a standard mutual aid agreement that we will provide services.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Fay, a second by Commissioner McKinney. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Rhett.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So first up for you, I have a board approval to go out for R F P for a, basically an in-house audit of the utilities program that the board of county commissioners operates. Feel like we're kind of at a transition point that we need to look at multi-year phasing and planning and see what our options are for moving forward.
What's it called?
Fifteen to twenty thousand, so it's going to be over, operationally, we can spend.
I understand the city of Marianna is willing to split those costs with us?
They, yes, we have entertained that, but without knowing what, you know, a dollar figure would be, not sure.
So have you read the contract?
The contract with the city?
Yes.
Glanced it multiple times over the years, but I wouldn't say I had.
Can you get me a copy of it?
Yeah, I can do that.
All right, I'd like to read it.
So does it cost twenty-five or?
No, we're, the estimate is between fifteen and twenty, and the city is willing to share that cost to do a study.
And this, the study is specifically designed to answer what questions?
Okay, so primarily, we're at a point now where our aging infrastructure, you know, twenty plus years old, is in dire need of some rehab. Sewer infrastructure primarily. So we need to rehab sewer infrastructure and we'll need to improve and grow our water infrastructure. So when you start looking at all these projects that we need to, you know, maintain the system, that dollar amount easily reaches into the multi-millions. And yes, there are grants and loans and things of that nature that are available to do those. With main one primarily being a loan from the state to do sewer expansions in certain areas, which we currently, you know, have multi-years spaced out for that. One of our biggest deficiencies on the water system is some of our fees aren't where they need to be as far as, you know, making sure we're taking in enough money to put money back to grow the system and have either operational money or, you know, match money for these grants when they come available.
I obviously, I know what you're saying, Rhett, and I don't disagree with you. But the federal government, you know, is, they got that one point five trillion dollars, and they're looking at another three point five, that's really about five point five trillion. Okay. And these type projects is going to be part of that. Well, it's up to the board if y'all want to spend money to go out or if you just want to.
Historically, and I'll ask this to Danielle or Rhett or Will Anne, would you say that our utility, is it two separate utilities, water? And are they, are they accounted for separately, the water system and sewer system, or are they all combined?
I've been tracking in the last several years, water and sewer are in separate. We had it all mounted physically.
So would you say that the system is operating in the red or black?
For many years, we had to subsidize with dollar revenue dollars. This year, I think we're subsidized. Fifty-four thousand dollars, one twenty-two dollars a year. In a perfect world, it would be making money, it would be putting money back for the repairs that he's talking about.
Fifty-four thousand dollars doesn't include any, any money being sent back towards future improvements at all?
We adjusted the rates how many years ago? Well, it's been in mine and Eric's time. It seems like yesterday.
The last increase was nineteen twenty year.
So that's why I want to see the contract.
The studies only show what deficits we have, the red and where we need to be at for surplus plus.
So it'll be able, so it'll ideally, it'll review our current fee structure, our rate structure.
You said ideally, you're not sure if it's in the contract.
Well, we haven't written it. So that's what, what I'll, here's what I, my expectation would be when I put out an R F P. We want to do an overview of our current fee structure for our water, commercial, residential water and sewer, all four categories. And then we also want to look at our current infrastructure and how to get it up to a standard where maintenance is at a minimum. So right now, we're spending a hefty amount of money just keeping things running. Whereas if we had enough money annually to set back, we would have this reserve that we could make these updates, not repairs. So that's where we start getting behind when we're, you know, having to make repairs and want to be able to plan proactively because there's no guarantee on, you know, grants and loans and things of that nature.
That's not all you want, though.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, so that we want to look at, you know, within, within our department, you know, we've got, so here, update the water capacity. So we want to look at the best way to do that, whether it's going to be, you know, do we need to find a location, drill more wells, do we need a ground storage tank, tower? You know, how are we going to best serve the water needs that are ever growing? We're currently having issues with. We've got two big projects going on right now, sewer related, obviously Indian Springs, you know, we're continuing to grow. We're wanting to obviously keep growing and expanding all of our commercial capacity. And then we have a big need for just a office slash warehouse space for our personnel. Currently, we're working in three different facilities. So we've got an office in one location and then two separate warehouses.
What size square footage are you looking at? We had the water management different building, I think it's somewhere around.
Yeah.
Seven thousand?
Something like that would be ideal where it has both office and warehouse in one spot. Because a lot of these contracts, as we write on new construction, we write in there to have spare parts and things that, you know, would be your own consignment stuff later on. I ain't going to work with this stuff. So that's a big concern of ours within our personnel. And then the rate study, like I said, and then obviously operationally, was this something that, you know, private consulting company can look at and say, yep, Jackson County, you know, takes these steps and moves forward and they'll be able to operate this utility system? Or does it need to be transitioned to, you know, either City of Marianna, who's a much larger utility that has a lot of the, the tools and equipment, personnel that we need to grow to? Or is it something, which another option here would be to look at establishing our, you know, our own independent utility authority that we would be partner of with the city and any other municipality and county that we could offer kind of mutual aid or, you know, anything of that nature for other municipalities? And then obviously working with the city.
So you'll, you'll comprise this contract that you foresee in your mind, and you'll put it and bring it back, of course, so we can.
If you like, I can, yeah, I can do that.
I'll make a motion, we authorize between fifteen and twenty thousand.
City, continuing to, on the city.
Yes, yes, yeah, managed, right. But no, wait, no, there's no caveats. I would, I would, they're, they're, they're one.
No, we put out R F P.
I mean, for the city's obligations, they're just paying half, just to see where they're at also, or they don't?
Yeah.
Okay, so they'll put their input in there.
Yeah.
So we put out an R F P and just see what the price comes back to do this study.
Obviously, at that point, authorize approval of that contract.
Then we can prove it or this. I got a motion back from Mr. Hill, and I got a second back from Mr. Donna Proach to go out for R F P to conduct the study. Any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Fay.
I'm just saying, you know, I think we need to either get in or get out for the utility business. I mean, it's been an issue for a while, but, you know, if we get in, we just need, we need to get, get in.
Yes, sir.
Well, and if we can't, we need to get out.
It's hard for me to believe that municipalities scattered around this country are all losing money on water and sewer.
They're not. They're not.
Okay. We need revenue.
There's a reason.
We need to, well, we need to look at it and see what we need to do.
That's what I said. Studies. So I'm assuming, Rhett, this, this is going to sort of analysis on where our aging structure is. So because at some point, the aging structure will have to be replaced. And so it'll be a huge cost analysis to that, but also where our rates need to be as far as futuristically stepping in that program. Because you infuse a whole nother basic, larger department.
You, ten, fifteen years from now, you'll probably have water and sewer all over town.
Well, I mean, it's a big push. I mean, I remember almost nine years ago or longer, there was a lady, Kay, she lived on Pickle Creek Road, I believe. Anyway, long story short, she met with the civic center. This was about, the citizen lodge, and that was about running water all the way up to Little Dodson. And so that's a major undertaking. And she, she's done a study and some efforts in Miami-Dade County, but she's from and lived at that time in here in this county. So anyway, long story short, is that, I mean, there's a big push to get people onto city or. Well, we're in the mercy of Marianna. Well, and I think the problem is, and speaking of B E P several years ago, the, the, I think the calculus, and I'm not that institutional in that, but you have cities that have applied for these large water treatment plants. And then for them to fund those is very costly. Well, then you come along with a county and say, I only put one out there too, where they're saying, well, that one still has capacity. We're not on fund two if this one's not at capacity.
And it wouldn't make any sense to do that anyway.
That's right, it would, because from financial standpoint, you're R I O, that would be in the numbers.
All right, we need to move along, and we'll be here at midnight. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you, Rhett. Hunter?
Well, good afternoon.
Good evening.
The first item I have is asking for your approval of the change order and certificate of completion to complete the Cypress Park rerepair project.
Got a motion by Commissioner Donifro, second by Commissioner Hill, any questions?
What was the change order for exactly?
Uh, so basically, it's approving additional contract days, because we had a hard time getting an electrical contractor in there, and also just a three-hundred-and-fifty dollars additional to have the portable toilet on-site, because we couldn't complete the project.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five-zero. All right, Mr. Hunter?
Sure, the next item is to approve to, for you all to approve appointing Thomas Loonberger to the Tri-County Airport Authority.
Second, got a motion by Commissioner Page, second by my Commissioner McKinney. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, next one's yours also.
Yes, this is asking you to approve the HMGP grant agreement. This is for Cruiser Road, this is for the phase one of the drainage projects.
Got a motion by Commissioner Page.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Donifro with a question.
This the one that is going to solve the flooding issue out there at each end of Cruiser Road, correct?
Yes.
Okay, any more questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand, motion carries five-zero. Mr. Hunter?
Okay, so this is, the next item is asking for your approval of an interlocal agreement with the City of Jacob for its CDBGDR application.
So, move. Got a motion by Commissioner McKinney, second by Commissioner Hill, and I have a question. Noticed that they are requesting we supply two-thousand dollars.
Yes, that's.
For funding, if they're, what are we doing with all the other municipalities in the county?
Well, that's a good question, so they reached out to us directly to get into the central local agreement. So, um, previously on other DR applications, we have looked to them and asked them what their needs were, and they've said they're taken care of. I know Willan was part of those conversations with different DR agreements.
And we are working with, like, the City of Cotton Hill, where they had a specific need. So, we're always here when and if they need something, but most of them already had theirs in their response to us underway and taken care of.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're not giving two-thousand dollars to Jacob and not to all the others.
Mr. Biddle, would you like to stand on this?
Going to come up.
Come up and state your name, please.
City manager, open deck. We wanted to request from you guys the two-thousand dollars, because what it does is give us points in the grant. Now, we could have submitted the grant without, uh, the paving. What, what we're trying to do, we're trying to pave and do drainage all at the same time. So, because every road that we have that we done fixed so far, we have to get Scottman. The county hasn't given us the money for it. And I figured since you guys didn't give us the thirty-thousand dollars for Russ Road, you could give us two-thousand dollars.
Which one?
What, which, oh, what? Oh, I know what he's talking about.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Russell Road, Russ Road?
Russ Road.
Why didn't we?
Because they haven't built it. They were going to have to construct the contractor out there doing the work, and we agreed to pay thirty-three-five, and they just needed to invoice us, and they didn't.
How long goes that been?
Two thousand nineteen.
All right.
Yes. No, well, it come in now, it's seventy-four thousand, right?
Right, it could be no longer on site.
Right.
And they always have that activation.
Was that your motion on the two-thousand dollars?
Oh, yes.
Yes, all right. Got a motion by Commissioner McKinney, second by Commissioner Hill, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion. Motion carries five-zero, go, go ahead.
I do want to say, I will need an invoice to pay you the two-thousand dollars. So, if it goes through and the contractors out there, then I need an invoice run to the town to pay.
All right, well, I guess we're going to go into public hearing.
We got fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen.
Those, all of the changes. All right, moving right along. Hunter?
Yes, uh, so this is board approval to set a public hearing for the readoption of the six cents gas tax. Um, so previously, what happened on the previous ordinance that we adopted, we got our correspondence back from the Department of Revenue stating that the references to the board statutes were incorrect. So, we're having to re-advertise, redump, um, same process as normal. All the interlocal agreements we did will still stand, so just to kind of formality.
Okay, so we need to set a public hearing, right?
Yes, for the next board meeting, twenty-eighth and six fifteen.
Six fifteen?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a motion?
Offer motion to set a public hearing.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Donifro to set a public hearing for the twenty-eighth, six fifteen, for the readoption or extending that six, uh, gas tax that was inadvertently improperly referenced to the count, uh, the state.
Yes, I was going to do that right after this thing.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Donifro. Second, second by Commissioner McKinney.
Okay.
All right.
I just want to say, this is not a new gas tax. The same old thing, so.
There's a lot of confusion in the public right now for it.
Okay, so, all we're doing is extending the gas tax that's been on the books for about thirty years. All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand for setting the public hearing. Motion carries five-zero. Okay, Mr. Rhett?
All right, first up I have for you is a board review and approval of mowing program positions. So, these are the eight OPS employees that we have out doing the right-of-way mowing with the lease mowers and tractors. What I reckon, so the backstory is, uh, since they were set up as OPS, intended to only work for six months, we've got several of them that are going to be terminated at the end of this month. Obviously, there's going to be grass to mow for a couple more months. So, what our proposal is, is to hire, uh, six of the OP, uh, current OPS employees as year-round OPS employees and not turn them on to that six months. And we've got two of those that are interested in becoming full-time benefited employees, so.
They, in addition to mowing, they will be cutting limbs?
Yes, sir, so in the off-season, which here is very short, uh, they'll be focusing on paved road, paved road right-of-way maintenance, which is going to be brush cutting, uh, guardrails, drainage structures, you know, everything that keeps folks moving on the highway.
How about the dirt road?
Well, they'll have to mow the brush on the dirt roads too.
Yeah, so whenever we get hopefully some new equipment for the brush cutting, uh, we do have, obviously, our current staffing maintains the dirt roads. So, I'm hoping the, you know, the district supervisors will be able to primarily focus on dirt road, and then this paved road right-of-way maintenance team will be obviously on the paved road.
So, you're talking six OPS with no benefits besides retirement and two full-time with benefit?
Yes, sir, and we're going to be taking, uh, two existing operator positions and transitioning into the, uh, the paved road maintenance.
How many open positions do you have?
Total of road and bridge right now, I have not got updates, nothing out. I cannot.
Seventeen last week, right?
Seventeen, probably still seventeen.
Well, it hasn't transitioned in the past couple of weeks, so I don't have accurate number for you, I apologize.
Okay.
So, there's a couple of caveats, I know, like you said, there always is. So, since they're going to be OPS employees, uh, the idea is to maintain our current workforce as OPS, but as those positions, you know, if they quit or go to something else, they'll be advertised as a full-time employee. But until that time, since they're OPS, they'll have to be renewed annually. So, I anticipate every January to be coming back to authorize X amount of OPS positions of those current employees.
So, the other six, for some reason, didn't want to become part of the full-time with...
Correct. So, and what was sought out when we, you know, years ago, when we filled these positions were, you know, retirees or folks that could work that altered schedule and not the full-time year-round forty hours. Uh, so, you know, a lot of them having the retirement or having the health benefits and stuff like that, they really just would rather have the extra money on the paycheck every two weeks.
All six of the OPS, uh, agreed upon the, a lower rate, right, than what they're getting paid now.
So, there's only, I think, maybe four of the eight now that are, um, at fifteen dollars. So, some of them are already, if they work over six months, they have to, we have to deduct their retirement. So, what is fifteen dollars actually equates to thirteen fifty on the paycheck. So, we've got some in both categories, because like I said, some are terminated at the end of this month. That would be our six-month employees, but we've got some that've been employees since the beginning of last year, so they've been on for, you know, eighteen plus.
So, the other six will, could be, all of them will continue working through the season?
Yes.
They'll all continue working.
At the end of this month, all OPS employees will be reverting to thirteen fifty, but due to the deduction.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Page. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five-zero. Rhett, you're the next one.
Yeah, sorry about all these additions, guys. Um, so next up is board approval to award, uh, contract twenty-twenty-one. So, this is the District Two, forty-one seventy-seven projects, and the lowest bidder is going to be...
APS?
APS, there it is up top, asphalt paving systems, so that's going to be a chip seal project.
It's, it's my theme of...
District Two, forty-one seventy-seven projects.
To accept the...
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Page, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hill, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five-zero.
All right, next up is CEI services for Sweet Pond Road, which is District Five, forty-one seventy-seven FEMA project. The highest-ranked firm was Melvin Engineering, asks for approval to hire DHM for CEI services.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner McKinney, all those in favor, raise your right hand. I'm not going to give you a chance to question that.
And we're going to get it rolling quickly. Next up, similar to the last, board approval of a high-strank firm for CEI services on the District Two, Chip Seal Roads, uh, the highest-ranked firm was All Day Highway Engineer.
So, move. Got a motion by Commissioner McKinney, second, got a second by Commissioner Donifro, and Commissioner Page wants to say so.
I have to abstain because my son works for All Day Highway for two more days.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries four-zero, and Commissioner Page abstaining because of conflict with the spending.
All right, uh, next up is board approval of award on County Road two-eight-six, Blueberry Drive. This is a FEMA HMGP hazard mitigation project. So, Gulf Coast Utility Contractor, GCUC, was the lowest, uh, bid.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Page, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five-zero, you got a question?
So, when the project possibly go start?
So, I talked to them today, and they said they're looking at about a month, so they're not going to be waiting on us. Again, we'll have to, you know, solicit for CEI services, uh, but we should have...
Completion date's like eight months. After starting, it was, I think, when I originally talked to them, it was, uh, eight months for completion.
For the construction time?
Yes.
Uh, I'm not sure.
And this was a DT, that same one you did on, or Spire, did on one-six-two, what's the one?
The recent project, similar, yes.
Rhett, any idea when Anderson's going to start on Sweet Pond?
Uh, we'll talk with him tomorrow, I'll get with the CEI, we'll set up a, uh, pre-construction, get the schedule ironed out. And, I mean, they got, Anderson has several projects right now underway, um, but, you know.
Just let me know.
Yes, sir.
My District Two was November, is that the one? Nope, that's the other one.
Next November for you.
You got too much going on, keep it straight. All right, that's it for me, thank you all.
All right, thanks, have a good one. All right, Mr. Hunter Potts? We're going to go into public hearing. All right, we're in public hearing, go ahead, Hunter.
Yes, this is board discussion and adoption of the utility system revenue bond ordinance. We'll use somebody from, should be here to, um, present this to you guys.
Okay, come on up, sir. State your name for the record, please.
Alex Fisher, Neighbors Gidlin, we represent the county as bond counsel on this matter. Uh, chairman, commissioners, nice to see y'all. Uh, so this is an ordinance for y'all, essentially, it's for savings for the county. It's a refunding of a bond that had been passed, um, by the county before. I believe it's the same lender in this instance, so it's for, um, just over three million dollars, the refunding there, but it's going to be large savings to the counties because the rate is one-point-six-one percent.
Well, we like that part.
What is, what is the projected annual savings?
It's in your hands.
Yeah, I do not have that in front of me.
Savings of one-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, six fifty-four.
Yeah.
Okay.
We need to read the ordinance.
Yeah, we do that in public?
Yeah.
Go ahead and read it, Ms. Hill.
This is an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Jackson County, Florida, authorizing the issuance of a not-to-exceed three-million-one-hundred-thousand-dollar Jackson County for the utility system revenue refunding bond, Series twenty-twenty-one, to provide funds to refund the issuer's outstanding utility system revenue refunding bond, Series two thousand and fifteen, providing for the payment of the Series twenty-twenty-one bond from the pledged revenues provided herein, making certain covenants and agreements in connection therewith, authorizing the sale of the Series twenty-twenty-one bond at negotiated sale, authorizing other required actions, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone here for or against this? Is there anyone on Zoom for or against? Rhett, you see anyone?
I see no one with their hand up.
Without a public hearing, must the pleasure of the board. Got a motion by Commissioner Hill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Page, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five-zero. Ms. Wendy?
Mr. Chairman, do you want to break to handle the closing?
Yeah, I want to take a short break, about five minutes, let me, uh, run some of these documents. We will adjourn for ten minutes.
...
You ready, Daniel? Back in session, we're going to go into a public hearing, Ms. Wendy.
Good evening, Commissioners. Our first public hearing is a request for board discussion and adoption of road, of the road abandonment ordinance. The changes restrict abandonment of roads to publicly accessible waters in the county and include new legislative text changes effective July one, twenty twenty one regarding community development districts. Shall I read the title now?
You can, yes.
This is an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Jackson County, Florida, providing for the amendment of section seventy four dash six twenty Jackson County Code of Ordinances related to restrictions on abandonment of roads, streets of public accessway to publicly accessible bodies of water, providing for regulations relating to the conveyance of roads right of way and appropriate drainage facilities to community development districts, providing for separability, providing for an effective date.
Okay. Is there anyone here for or against this? Joey? Chris?
I see no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. We are now out of public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll offer motion to adopt the rent road abandonment ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Donovan Rowan to adopt the ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pay. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, hold on a second. We're back in public hearing, Ms. Wendy.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a request for board discussion and adoption of the film and motion photography ordinance. And I will read the title. Ordinance relating to the film and photo production, amending section seventy four of the Code of Jackson County, Florida, regulating photo production, establishing the definition of film and motion photography and including the requirement and exceptions to obtain a permit, providing for enforcement by revocation of permit, removal from county property and civil penalty for failure to obtain a film or photo permit, providing separability inclusion in the code as an effective date.
Okay, is there anyone here for or against this? Fred, you see any hands waving?
Just a reminder, if there's anybody that would like to speak for or against this, it's star nine via telephone. I see no hands.
Hearing none, we are out of public hearing. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Remove to adopt the film and motion photography ordinance and authorize the chairman to sign.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Pay. Is there a second?
A second, but with a question.
Second by Commissioner McKinney with questions.
How can we enforce this, Ms. Wendy? What's the enforceable aspect of it?
Well, we do have penalties in which, um, fees may be, um, applied. Uh, if they do not meet the criteria in the approved, um, permit, then code enforcement would, um, be directed or planning, there would need a planning regarding the matter.
I think there's actually a fee schedule in there.
Yes, sir.
If you go to the page, Alex, yeah, two ninety three, it tells you what happens to them.
Wendy, real quick, have we had any of this situation besides one, I think, from a river that time or something upon that? Have we had that happen that you would see that this would help? Um, I remember one, something about a bar pit that they wanted to use, one of our.
Pits. Dirt pits.
Dirt pits, I think. Been a long time ago.
They'll probably just don't use it as a prop, what they would do. Um, Wendy, on page two ninety two, paragraph eight. Uh, you're talking about no production shall utilize drones without prior authorization from through the special use permit process and required F A, FAA licensing. No filming shall take place in a no fly zone. Is that no filming with a drone?
Correct.
It doesn't say that. It says no filming should take place in a no fly zone.
I don't think there's any allowed with anything.
Any filming, but it's talking.
Well, no fly.
You can't film anything with a drone?
Not in the no fly.
That you can't get out there off the end of the runway. But they can get with a drone, but you could certainly go out there and be on the ground film. I think we need to tighten that up some and insert drone in there.
You're not on the, if you're on the ground though, you're not filming in the no fly zone.
Yes, you are.
You're the airport.
You're at the end of the, if you're out there at, in that no fly zone at the end of the runway, you can be filming by hand.
Well, FAA don't, I mean, they, that's governance of them anyway, so they.
Well, I, I just, they would be finished and gone before FAA realized Marianna was on the map.
So if you're at the airport, I think he's glued to, at the airport, Marianna, and you have a drone and you're filming.
Oh, well, yeah, no fly zone. You can't have it up, so, but you can. If they allow you out there, you can film from the ground. You're not in the no fly zone. Well, that's not what it says. Well, it just says. No filming shall take place in a no fly zone. And the no fly zone extends from the ground. Trust me, I know.
Be changed and we're about it fast.
I would, I think we need to, no filming with a drone may take place in a no fly zone.
Well, I think in a no fly zone, you have to get permission. Well, I think in a no-fly zone, you have to get permission, no matter if you're on the ground or with a drone.
Yeah, that's all H.
No. If you go out there and film at the end of the runway. That's right.
Yeah, that's what we were.
I would insert drone in there somewhere.
That covers that.
That's the major.
Can we do this?
If, I don't, I'm no attorney, but I don't think that's the stance to change, so I think it's, I think it's fine to insert that word.
Yeah, just approve it with the change.
Who done it? See, the motion was paid in McKinney. I'll change mine to add that, if that's all right.
Alex, you agree? All right, any more questions?
Yeah, well, Ms. Wendy, a lot of times you bring these back that we've talked about several times, and it's read. You know, the stuff that got changed is read.
This whole thing would have been read. Yes, sir, so, but this is the final version from the very last of the meetings.
We all know that it might not be.
Yes, sir.
All right, any more questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. All right. We're back in public hearing, Ms. Wendy.
Yes, sir. This is a request for discussion and adoption of the floodplain ordinance amendment. The deputy state floodplain manager provided a draft ordinance with necessary changes to meet requirements for the new community rating system class A prerequisite, as per FEMA policy and state floodplain management office. The ordinance amendment must be approved prior to the county's cycle visit to update CRS in the fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two. And if I may, I will read the title.
Please.
An ordinance by the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners amending the Jackson County, Florida Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty-eight, to provide criteria for accessory structures in flood hazard areas to specify elevation of manufactured homes in flood hazard areas, providing for applicability and separability and providing for an effective date.
Is there anyone here for or against this? Fred? Do you have anyone for or against?
I see no hands raised.
Okay, thank you, sir. We're out of public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman. I move to adopt the floodplain ordinance as amended and authorize the chair to sign.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Pate to adopt the ordinance. Is there a second? Second. Got a second by Commissioner Donofro. Are there any questions? Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Going back into public hearing to talk about this lovely ordinance that we've discussed forty times, the recreational vehicle. Ms. Wendy, go ahead.
Yes, sir, requesting board discussion and adoption of the recreational vehicle ordinance, and I read the title. An ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Jackson County, Florida, amending article four, division eight of the Jackson County Code of Ordinances to add subdivision nine to be titled recreational vehicles, authorizing the use of recreational vehicles as permanent housing on residential real property, amending section seventy-four dash ninety-seven to remove reference to recreational vehicles as temporary housing during home construction, providing for separability, providing for repealer, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, is there anyone here for or against? Fred, you see any hands waving?
I see none.
We're out of public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board? And I do have a couple of questions.
I move, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Pate.
I move to adopt the recreational vehicle ordinance and authorize the chairman to sign.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Pate. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner McKinney, and I do have questions. Turn to page three twenty-two.
I don't have your same page number, so if you could tell me.
Okay, go to seventy-four dash six three three, the first paragraph.
Yes, sir.
I've talked about this many times. Temporary use of a recreational vehicle as a residence while a permanent residence is under construction is allowable with a connection to the permanent resident septic tank. However, a certificate of occupancy will not be issued unless the temporary connection or the recreational vehicle is removed. Okay, I don't like that. I haven't liked it from the beginning, and I still don't like it. The last paragraph, it says recreational vehicle used for temporary residence shall be fully licensed and ready for highway use and shall remain on the site for no more than three hundred and sixty-five consecutive days. We have people that use these recreational vehicles for hunting camps, so we have to, they stay in them when hunting season, and they gotta move them.
Really have to grow, no, can't they request an extension?
But now that you bring that up, that was.
That was one of the things we discussed, and I thought.
For my right collection, I didn't like one hundred and eighty days. That's why I got changed to three sixty-five. That specifically got changed to three sixty-five because the one eighty was what.
Okay, are there any more questions? We have a motion, and we have a second.
Hold on. Well, we better, I mean.
Just a statement. Just for the record, I'll be voting against this because, again, I am not in favor of allowing recreational vehicles to be used on a permanent basis. State of my position.
And I got a question for that.
What's your question?
I mean, one of our statement, we're not talking about cities now. We're talking about killing. Okay.
And non-platted subdivision.
And not, yeah.
Okay, all right. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, like, motion fails three-two.
Had another chance to look at this.
The three that voted against it, Donofro, Hill, Becca.
But we've.
We have beat this horse.
I know.
It's still not.
We still beat it, but why can't we get?
Why do we even need it?
Did you? I agree.
Okay, let's move on.
But no, no, I mean, we still kicking this can. Didn't you mark this up?
I marked it up a dozen times, Pate.
Why is it not getting put in here like, I mean, we still fighting this? I voted just to, you know, because we discussed, discussed it how many times? One, two, three, four, five, six, and we can't get it right.
That's a minimum.
So what, what's the issue?
The issue with, with me is.
I'm standing here, but what's the issue with getting? Either we're not marking it up, or we're marking it up and y'all not changing.
I make the changes you recommend.
I can tell you on the one topic specifically, it was mentioned about the temporary residence. But the explanation is if you don't have that, if, if you want a permanent, you go the permanent route. You just have to have the density for it. The reason the temporary is important is you would be literally go in contradiction with your comp plan in like a, in a ag two situation on a one acre lot. If you give them a temporary permit for their RV while they're also building a home, and you don't require them to disconnect, then you are violating your own rules. That's why that's in there. So even though you say that, if we explain why that's contradictory to your rules, you literally can't adopt some.
What if you build in a house on fifteen acres?
Then in that case, they just get a permanent, they get a permanent permit for it. There's two options in here. There's permanent and there's temporary. The temporary is specifically for a situation where you could not have both because your density doesn't allow for it. So that's why that doesn't.
Kick it a little further.
About three hundred and sixty-five was changed because you didn't like the one eighty. You see, I agreed on three sixty-five. That is changed.
I actually, what we agreed to was how Commissioner Hill get Michelle and then work out the language and bring it back. That was the agreement. But it goes back to the question, who's going to police it? There are so many of these campers scattered around the county. Who's gonna be the camper police? Tony?
Four, five every day.
Yes, code enforcement.
But she will never catch up. Anyway, it's, death is gone. Let's move on.
But it's not dead because we all, this whole, well, four of us wants campers to be allowed, and we still fight.
Why don't you just rescind your existing regulations on RVs?
Why don't we do what?
Just rescind it.
Just.
Don't have any.
Fine, what's, what's the number? I can't make a motion, but.
Where's the? Is that what we're?
You want to talk about it next meeting? All right, we'll talk about it. Michelle, if you'll provide that information. All right. All right, Ms. Pollard, you want to speak? Come on up.
We don't want to share the planning division, who approved all this. The reason you can't, it goes against the comprehensive plan. You cannot allow a house plus having a camper, whatever size it is. That's why we, you have to have these strict rules about it.
But the comprehensive plan, is this the one we thought that, that we can change to comprehensive? This is not the one?
No.
Oh, we could.
Think about it this way, let's say you, you got a subdivision, okay?
It's not.
And somebody, no, no, what I'm saying, though, you have a subdivision, if you don't have any rules about a camper being there, somebody can put it there and let it stay, and it adds on to the water, the well, and everything else.
So let me ask you this. I'm building, I'm building my house. I got me a camper.
Right.
I'm hooked to the seven, okay? I call for my certificate of occupancy. Okay? Hey, when is he coming out there? Because I'm going to be still, I continue to live in that camper. I can't live in the house till I get my CO, so it's just, it's not good that we, it's written.
It'll work, you see. I mean, building will work with them. Once they're ready to disconnect and do the plumbing on the house, then, you know, if it's ready for the CO, then they can be given the CO.
Yeah, but you don't get the CO until it's finished. The electrical's in, the plumbing's in, and all of these final inspections are done.
That's when you.
But he's not, you're not giving me my CO because I've got my camper hooked up because my elderly mother lives in the camper. While, you know, she's there while we're waiting to get the, you see the problem you're creating?
Another answer to all this.
That's a variant.
Yeah.
No, you can have so many campers, and then you have a, an RV site where the, all the campers can go to, okay? But you can't allow like your house and yours to your camper over here and both attached to the well and the septic chain.
Why? I can't, no.
Because it goes against the comprehensive plan, and it goes against your neighborhood, and it goes.
Well, let's change the comp plan.
No, you can't change the comp plan.
Oh, but we can.
Not immediately.
It takes a while, but it can be changed, but I don't want to get into that.
I helped write the comp plan way back in the nineties.
Okay.
And we were the last company in the state of Florida to get the comp plan approved, so we could keep some of the stuff that go on here in Jackson County. So no, you can't just say I'm gonna change the comp plan.
There's a process to go through and change it.
But it's very complicated, and it's not gonna change what you're saying about having a camper next to your house, you know, that thing, so.
All right.
This way, you have your campers in an RV site, that's acceptable.
Sure.
Having them in the neighborhood like this is not acceptable for any length of time.
Only on a temporary basis.
Just temporary, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
That's why this rule has to be here, okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Just like two hundred acres, I will put a camper out there hooked up to electricity and a septic tank for to be able to do.
No, disagree.
I just wanted to clarify.
What about if I'm building a house and I won't leave it there?
If you have more than one acre and you got the density, you just go to the permanent one.
We need to reword the thing.
There's two options, permanent and there was temporary. The temporary was only for situations where you couldn't have a house and an RV. It was allowing an avenue for that, but it still had the permanent as an option.
All right, I'm getting hungry.
The only reason we.
We've been beating on this thing forever.
Just a question, where does that leave us with no, no ordinance in place?
Oh, there is.
I, I do have a question, please, because we do have blanket variants in place. What do we do with the blanket variant?
I guess you're leaving it there, no?
So the existing.
And they met the criteria of what they were working on.
So it's allowed now through our variants. But they have to come in. The people who do the right thing has to go through all the other, the paperwork and all, and we got to pile them scattered out there now.
You delegated authority to the county administrator to approve a variant for the placement of an RV. Okay, okay.
Commissioner, if I may.
When I say delegate, I mean that people don't have to appear before you and the board to get it approved.
No, they go before planning and get it. All right, what else?
I was just gonna say, if you do have rules in place, it does give code enforcement a way to move, to clean up the ones that don't have their proper permit.
I would say that until we get it all worked out, code enforcement's got other things they need to be doing.
Yeah, right now, they're not allowed without getting the variants. Kick it again.
All right. Ms. Wendy?
Thank you. So the next one is requesting board approval of an exception due to increased cost of building materials for a ship replacement project on Kennyhead Road, Cammerton. The project was delayed because the property owner had to correct these issues, which took several months, so in the meantime, the cost of materials went up twenty-seven thousand two hundred and thirty dollars, and this still falls under the maximum award amount. So with that caveat in the L half, we're asking for proof.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner McKinney. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Ms. Wendy, you're next.
And the last one is a request to set a public hearing to consider a petition for a abandonment by Red Daniels, interim public transportation director on property located on Kelt Street, approximately nine hundred and fourteen feet from Merritt Mill Road, north of Kelt Street. And we're asking to set a public hearing for September twenty-eighth at six fifteen PM.
What's this for, Wendy, please?
The highway, highway. That street difference.
Didn't we set some rules about what you gotta go through to get this done?
Yes.
Are we going by that?
You gotta have a survey, you've got.
This is your, this is your staff.
So what, what is the, I guess, overall justification? Just because we own property on both sides, and it just makes it easier to travel between the two properties?
Early in the morning, you've got those employees crossing, going out to the yard.
Concern is, and we'll wait at the public hearing, is you do have some people that end, right, live in the trailer park right at the north end.
Yep.
Be a little inconvenient, but not too bad.
So how?
I make a motion, we said, what's the hearing date needs to be, twenty-eight to six fifteen.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Donofro to set a public hearing for the twenty-eighth at six fifteen. All those in favor, raise your right hand. My question is going to have to be, how are they going to enforce it? That's what I want to know.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Okay. Uh, Chair. Do you have anything you want to discuss with us? We did? Uh, what you got, Jill?
Okay, we had the main tower lighting damaged and the emergency team came in about ten minutes later and repaired it, got it running. Been running fine ever since. I had talked with Pam in the past and we'd had some quotes on it and I assumed there was going to be feeable money to pay for it. I never received direction and obviously I dropped the ball of not following up on that request. Now we're in emergency state for the life drought and we're in violation of FAA rules. So I got a quote as a.
Which tower is that?
The main tower, Sheriff's Office.
Old, old Sheriff's Office, old, new, new, the new one coming. What's left, what?
So what are we?
Thirty-one thousand and change.
One hundred and ninety-five.
Yeah.
They have revenue to take care of it.
That's totally replacing, they're taking off the current non-working one, replacing it with FAA approved LED lighting, red light and infrared airplanes.
The chairman, I'm making a motion would declare an emergency for this and the money come out of automated.
A second, Chair. Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Hill to approve the request, second by Commissioner McKinney. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. I really think you should just let the sheriff climb up there and change it.
Well, I want to say something.
I don't want to even watch, I can't do that.
How quick did this happen?
Within three to four weeks. They should have the parts here.
Many of y'all probably do or do not know Jeff is retiring. How many years, sir? How many years?
In fifteen days. Not how many years.
This is probably the last meeting.
I've been with the sheriff's office thirty-five years.
So I, I wanted to express, I'm not sure if you were going to be here for the next meeting, so I made notes on my notes too.
I don't plan on.
And so I, I would like to personally say in the twenty-four years I've been on fire rescue for Sneeze, you and Dewey and just a handful of other has been instrumental to keeping our communication systems up. And I know that no matter what it was, day or night, we've had to call in very inclement weather. You've always stepped up. I've called you late sometimes, but I, I wanted to express to me publicly what an asset we're losing, but you well deserve your thirty-five plus years of service for our county. But I, I wanted to make sure publicly that you are, been a valuable asset to the county.
They took a team, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Took money and y'all had to vote on things.
Yeah. But ain't none of us climbed towers, I bet.
No, I don't climb them.
We appreciate your service and we do accept volunteer.
Yes.
You'll get tired of that honeydew list. Good luck to you, Jeff. Chair, you got anything you want to add?
I will, um, Eric golf turned Friday.
You know how good I golf, so I'm good. My team that cut. Well, I'll say this here too, I've, I've also seen a bigger presence too lately in the east side and that's, that's good. I've got good compliments from y'all from, about the presence and barriers that were some, some, um, some issue, issue areas, but I've got some positive comments from the system. Yeah, very good.
Just let us know. Send me a message. You're a good man. Thanks, Doc. Michelle? Willa?
I have one thing. I need the board to consider setting an executive session for September twenty-eighth at four o'clock to discuss the fire rescue union negotiations with our council, legal council, Mark Bonfanti. If that works for the board.
Somebody work for me, second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pace, second by Commissioner Donald Pro to establish special meeting for the twenty-eighth, four PM. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries five zero.
That's all I have.
Mr. Donald Pro?
Yeah, well, Adam, I know under the consent agenda, we approved a number of task work orders for drainage issues. One of the issues in my district that's ongoing that I, that needs some attention. And I think it may take something like this as well as the issue that we went and looked at off of Watson. And all of that, that lady's yard has flooded a number of times. It's not gotten in her trailer, but it's definitely a flooding issue. I don't know how, how to approach it other than to maybe request a task work order to hire one of our engineering firms to look at that as well. Because I think it, it does cross the old US road as well, so.
Okay, I'll talk to Red about it.
That's all you have? Mr. Hill? Mr. Pace?
I got a question and.
I got an answer.
Good. Sorry I didn't mention it before, but redistricting, I know there's redistricting going on. Have we looked at ours? I mean, I don't think there'll be any changes. I told supervisor relation before yesterday, I met with her office, I'm announced, but part of that conversation was they hoped to have the numbers out by the end of this morning, state, and we. I know the state will, but I guess is that when we, we don't want to.
Well, we have to wait on the census data, which is my understanding. That's what she's waiting on is that, she's got it ready. And then that'll be up to you all if you actually change them.
Do we need to set a committee or the, or be prepared to look at it if needed by the commissioner?
Well, we're definitely going to have to look at it.
I don't think it's going to change much, but none of us has been here during a redistricting for the county, so. Or commissioners.
Would it be beneficial to have her come, just to give us kind of a snapshot of summer session?
The twenty-eighth, she may have the numbers.
Okay.
Twenty-eight?
She said the end of the month, it seemed like she would approve something they would have on me, but then.
That's what they've said all along, it'd be the end of the month. We got a meeting and you got to work.
It's at lunchtime. Oh, is that the one she has over here? Yeah. Or she has.
Okay. I would think that we just wait.
I just didn't want us to.
She probably is going to take all of us and do a special meeting. We'll have to set. Advertise it and just, if it looks like there's some changes that need to be made, we just come in here and hammer it out.
We're definitely going to have a lot of public input because I'm being called about that already, about redistricting, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
That does, well, I don't think it matters.
Yeah.
It ma, I don't know that it matters that they oppose because it's done by population, so.
Why you want to put it out there?
But if one's got way too much and the other's got less, you have to do that, I think. It's determined by state law for sure.
All right, anything else?
Uh, Ms. Willa, Wilmington Court, I want to make sure it's on the drainage list for the projects. Wilmington Court.
Why? Danielle?
One, authorization for paying Frazier nine-six thousand five hundred dollars for two annulances. Let me explain a little bit. We got a grant for two new annulances. We ordered the annulances and they have a shortage from who they normally get those chassis from, Frazier. And they had to go outside of their normal credit. Normally they have somebody that orders, whether they get paid on an annulance, they pay now. Well, they had to give Georgia's DITC and that, they wouldn't honor that deal. They wanted their money. But Frazier is invoicing for the chassis now and that will be deducted from our final invoice when we pay the annual.
Is it an increase?
No, they're going to eat the increase.
So move it, Chairman.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Donald Pro to plead this bill. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Yes, ma'am.
Other issue is the approval to pay the legal corporation four thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars fifty-five cents for the trim.
Second, motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner McKinney, pay the trip for the trim notices. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Okay, I got a couple of things. Ms. Willa?
Yes, sir.
Several months ago, we discussed getting waste management to come up with a plan to pick up refrigerators, couches, TVs, that type of stuff. Where are we on that?
I've been unable to get that produced, honestly. We had multiple conversations and it's always with, just within reach, but I have not gotten it.
Well, I think if they can't come up, then we need to start looking outside for someone else that will give, talk to us about it.
Is this specifically like if you, if I was a person that was, put a couch out in front of my house, you know, for them to come, give a surprise for doing that?
Right.
Because Waste Pro does that in the city of Marietta.
Yeah.
I, I did just want to add that I, the last communication I have with Ronnie was that, it was right after Ida. And that's where their main office was and he said, let me let them get situated and then I'll follow up, but I have not heard since then.
Okay, would you follow up on that? Let us know. When GP Strategies was in here last week, they said they would have us a report by Friday. Did anybody get it? Did you follow up on that? Tell him Friday passed a few days ago.
Did he say what Friday?
He said last Friday.
Being facetious.
I think what I would like to see us do, and maybe one of our next day meetings, first day meeting, is get Mary Carol and Clay and let's talk about the unpaid taxes. How many, how much unpaid taxes do we have out there that we're missing? And let's see if we can come up with some plan to solve this problem. We've talked about it on many occasions, but it still doesn't mean that we don't need to continue working on it. So are y'all in favor of doing that? Don't make a comment, Mike, just do it in the morning. That's all I've got. Any, anyone else have anything?